All right, it's 5:00 PM, we're gonna go ahead and kick our work session out this evening. I want to thank everybody for coming out, so we're gonna go ahead and have Councilman Brewer open us up in prayer.
Father God, we thank you for the day that you have given us, we thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve your people, we ask you to watch over us, help us make great decisions for our city, keep us safe as we leave, in your name we pray, amen.
So number one on the agenda is Walter Lewis to update on investing of bond funds. You doing all right tonight Walter?
Doing great, thank you. Council and Mayor, is this on?
Yeah. I don't know, look at the switch and see if it's on.
It's on, I got it on.
Okay. I want to say, the last time I was here, we talked about investing in bond funds, and we've had some really good calls as relates to, you know, that particular thing. And I think we have a team together and an organization together in terms of how it can matriculate from the investing to the city, so on and so forth. And the reason I'm here tonight is to try to move that law forward relative to the entire council being involved in terms of approving it, moving forward there. You know, the architects, there've been some ones on the, couple council members, the mayor, Shannon has done a great job there, Steve Masters, all of us, we've talked through just the logistics of this particular process, and also the, you know, Regent's Bank as well, they'll be the placement days in there on that, there've been great discussions as it relates to how you invest. Now, one of the reasons this program is important here, we're in a market right now where interest rates are going up and down, and over the last several, a year and a half, two years, interest rates have been high. But, there's a possibility that interest rates may die, and this program allows us to be able to walk in some rates and invest funds so that you can maximize your earnings even in a market that's declining, you know, there, and that's where the city benefits. So, what I'm asking tonight is that this council approve the team relative to what we're trying to accomplish to move this process forward there, you know, relative to the investment of funds. There was one question the last time I was here, I think it came from you Nate, you asked, you know, what has, you know, the city been earning on the funds as they've been sitting in their account? On the recreational bonds, we got that calculation, we're earning 4% actually. And that equated to about $800,000 and $9,000. So, that's additional funds that Regent's has invested, and the difference between the two is you're in a money market fund with the investments being high, and with rates being high like this, as they start to dip in that money market fund, rates go down, that's where you lose. But, if you can catch the market here with a structured investment that we're proposing, you know, there, that keeps the rates up here even in a down market, that's the protection that you have. So, that's the difference in the two, you know, to answer that question.
So, how much are you gonna be able to make?
Very far?
How much is this program?
I'm not gonna get in Nate this time, Nate.
No, I'm talking about this program that you're going with, how much are they gonna be able to make?
It's based on the yields that we actually lock into.
Okay.
I think the projections that we saw that were passed out, I think it was like 1.25 million, so.
Well, I don't want to lose anything.
Well, and that's kind of the structure that we have aligned right now, but it's based on how we catch the market, and lock things in, Ryan's been involved with the calls as well, we've talked with their architects in terms of laying out a structure that fits what they're trying to do. And what we're targeting is, you know, 1st of January this year, they're actually starting the process of spending the money to start building the projects, and we can layer out a program to where it fits the timing of the extractions of the money that's been invested there. So, that's the whole thing, I think it's a good thing for the city, and I think it's something that you can move forward with and give you some security as it relates to how you invest with your funds.
Thank you Walter, I'm excited, this is also gonna help with some of those costs that we didn't expect to be, to go up.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I've had some conversations with Steve at the beginning, I know we talked about this a couple months, a few months back. You know, the earnings could maybe buy some furniture that you need, you know, in the facility that you do, you know, there, but it's just earnings that wasn't something that you borrowed.
Oh, this is based on the 28, 9 mil.
Yes, sir.
One of the eight.
Yeah. We haven't touched the other pot, but that pot is making money as well, but it's in the money market where we have full access to it to do what you're doing from a capital standpoint.
Yes, sir.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Thank you Walter.
Thank you Walter.
Alright.
Thank you Walter, thank you.
Alright, next on the agenda, we have Councilman Brewer to introduce the 15U baseball team and the 16U baseball team. I think Nate's gonna do one, and Laura, who's gonna do the other?
Sure.
Okay, alright.
Coach Robinson, if you would, would you please come to the podium and introduce your All-Star team and your league champions, if you don't mind?
And then too, if you call them too, Coach Robinson, if they would just come up, we would like to just recognize them and get a picture with those guys as well.
Sounds good. First of all, we want to thank you Nate for inviting us tonight to come here and introduce my team. First, I want to introduce my assistant coach as well, if he'll come up as well. Coach Kevin Cook as well, he'll come up first. Alright? I'm gonna allow Kevin to, he's my assistant, so I'm gonna let him do his job, I'm gonna let him lead the nasty, uh, crowd.
Thank you all. I'll begin right here with my man Grayden Lewis. Weege. Carter Goins. Lincoln Kirk. Javion McGee. Eli Byrne. Connor Shrumpton. Lake McDaniel. William Schell.
Y'all want to tell us what these guys accomplished, I said nobody brought any footballs or anything for us, so.
We actually have two, the missing, Mr. Will Garrett, and also Vincent Holmes. But these guys represented us during the season for Baywood, and they were great for us this year, came up to be the number one team. Undefeated season, I believe it hadn't been accomplished in several years in Baywood, so that was a great accomplishment. Step down, boys.
This is the Baywood's.
That one?
Most of them are, most of them are.
That's what I was thinking, the 16U?
Y'all free to go on.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute. Get up there Kirk. Go to work.
Alright, everybody look my direction, smile for me on three.
Cheese.
One, two, and three, and one more to make sure all your eyes are open. One, two, and three. Gotcha.
Congrats guys.
Alright, so we have our next one, I don't want to say it wrong, which one is this Laura?
This is our, that was our, most of our 16U that's going to Louisiana, now this is our 15U that's going to Louisiana that will be representing Solocaga at the Regional Baywood Tournament.
Okay, so will the coaches come up, so introduce yourself and then introduce your players to us so they can be recognized? Please, don't be shy.
I'm Michael Wilson, this is my assistant coach Mitch Bradwell. Unfortunately, we got beat twice by the White Sox that were up here this year. They got a great baseball team. Our only two losses.
Oh wow.
But, thank y'all for everything y'all do for the park and recreation. And we'll start, right on the front, Corbin Castleberry. Jetliner. Dollar John. Mason Williams. Caden Cody. Tristan Yates. Aiden Wilson. CJ Franklin. And Aiden Williams.
Alright, so if y'all want to win next time, I want the coach.
Yeah, nobody, yeah. Y'all take a step down. Cheese. Look at them. Look at this way, one time. Alright Danny, come on. While we're talking about sports, I wanted to recognize, we had a couple of firemen that went out and played in the, I don't know what you call it, the fireman games, I think y'all know what it was officially called?
The World Police and Fire Games.
World Police and Fire Games, were you gonna say something, I didn't want to take that away.
Yeah, I was gonna bring it up.
Okay.
Briefly.
Uh, is it like, is it like 100 games?
Yeah, you can bring it up. If it's still your thunder, you can bring it up.
Birmingham is actually hosting the World Police and Fire Games this year. There's just shot 10,000 athletes from all over the world that are competing. And we had four members from our department who are participating in various events, two of them were on a softball team. They actually finished today and ended with the silver medal. They beat the NYPD team for silver. And I found out something interesting, NYPD and the bigger cities like that, they actually sponsor their teams to go out and play in a tournament a month, so.
They had conference guys on the team, they had made.
So, anyway, and then we have two guys who are also doing some weightlifting competitions, and their events are ongoing, so don't know the results yet, but we're hopeful, so.
It's pretty cold.
I do.
Good job.
Yeah.
So we didn't have any policemen to participate?
Maybe next year. But before you get started, you're fixing to go into yours, I want to congratulate you guys, you know, we had an awful fire. And I think it took us four minutes and some seconds to get there, and that's from the time the buzzer went off to we got the chains closing the truck, I think it was six months, six minutes before we was able to get water on the fire, so that was good, I think the fire department did a real good job.
I mean, the guys always do.
That's right.
This one's gotten the spotlight because it was a large incident, but even on the small incidents, you know, those those pieces of teamwork and those pieces of clockwork and the training, you know, coming in are always there, so.
No doubt.
You know, anytime we show up, it's somebody's worst day, but hopefully when we show up, things get better and not worse.
Yes.
We appreciate that Chief.
No doubt, thank you.
Alright, so since you're already here, you're ready, so you're next on the agenda is Nate asked us to request an increase of $31,537.50 in the FD auto R and M line GL010-530-43003-0000 to cover the complete cost of repairs on the KME engine involved in an accident in February. Insurance covered $120,307.95 of the $151,845.45 total.
So, the long and short of it is, and I mean, I know y'all were aware that we had a truck that had been in an accident back the very end of February, insurance was insurance and took 18 forever's to get through the process and all of that stuff, so we finally got clear of all of that just a couple of weeks ago. And the, you know, this truck is one that we're gonna have in the fleet for an extended period of time in the foreseeable future, we don't have a retirement date for this truck, it's the most recent engine that we had purchased before we started buying the sub, and so it's 2014, still got lots of life left in it. It will eventually roll down to replace our rescue truck in the scheme of things as we get the new truck in later towards the end of next year and all of that stuff. Eventually it will replace the rescue truck, of course at that time, the rescue truck will end up being surplus and sold as willed along that same process, our current reserve engine, the 1986 Ford engine, so, you know, as that stuff gets surplus, obviously that goes back into the general budget, which I hope would help offset some of this cost, additional cost, but there's just while we, while Williams has the truck, and they've got it torn apart, and we're going through it with a fine-toothed comb, you know, there's just, you know, some additional things that I feel like for, we're gonna have this truck for the next two decades plus, don't, like I said, I mean, don't know what that date's gonna be, but if we're gonna have it in our fleet serving the community for that long, you know, it's worth investing in it to make sure that it's good, it's nice, it does everything that we needed to do for that entire time, so.
Can I talk to Shannon about this, so is this total amount, is to, I know she was telling me your plan is to make sure everything is in sync, everything looks the same, so is this total amount for the paint, or is there something else in it too?
It includes, it includes several different things, it includes graphic, it includes paint, the, one of the previous chiefs back in 2010 through 2013, the way he put the numbers on, he had like these removable plates, and they get grimy, and they catch road dirt, and you wash the truck, and it, you know, it's hard to get them clean because they're, you know, bolted onto the side of the cab instead of it being an actual vinyl thing. So, there's some elements of, you know, making sure that we keep the trucks clean, we take care of them, we keep them nice along the way also, so, but, so it's not just strictly paint that is included. And if we were to come along and do this outside of, in conjunction with the repairs, I mean, it would probably cost us an extra $15,000 or $20,000, according to Williams Fire, if we just did it, you know, by itself.
My only thing is Nate, this is the only thing I have, and I think you probably know what I'm gonna say next, you know I like itemized lists, that's my only thing, you gave us one.
Did y'all not get the?
I probably did, where is it? That's the only thing, because I know when I talked to Shannon, I know I think, yeah. Because when I talked to Shannon, I thought it was just for the, um, the paint.
That's the list that covers the whole entire repair cost of everything.
And these were just the additional, um, that?
And this is the best truck.
Well, the, yeah, it's certainly one of our better trucks, absolutely. The current engine that we have at Station 1 is the reverb that we just got this year.
Did you ever get the radio fixed in it yet? There's a radio, there's been a radio problem for a hot minute.
There's been a radio issue, no, not yet, and it's, I'm working on trying to find an alternate vendor because the vendor we had been using is not holding up their end of the bargain to.
Well, they need to come on with.
So, I'm trying to find, I talked to another vendor that's hopefully going to step in and handle our issue for us.
Good deal.
Alright, Shannon, how does this work with, because I know he's asking for a budget increase, so how does this work when they turn in their budget? And I'm not saying you're gonna do this, I don't want you to turn in your budget and then ask for level funding when we know we're about to do this 31,000 increase, and then there was a 25,000 for that turnout here? Because those are things that shouldn't happen again.
Correct.
So Shannon, how, how is his budget?
They included it with his budget request for next year because those were special ones.
Alright.
Even, even on the budget worksheets that we've been working on up to this point, it actually has in there, you know, a budget increase of this amount above what was, so it's well documented.
Okay, and Shannon, when we do the budget, it will be nice to see those special things that we had to do, and this is the reason, some of those things we may have to plan for, so we'll know that when we do the budget this time, we don't need it, but we need to be proactive when we do the next budget, if that makes sense. So, it would just be nice to see a list of things that we bought this time, but we're not gonna have to buy it again for two years, or for three years, so that way we can try to get everything on a rotation, if that makes sense.
I think Luanne has already put them in there of what's been done so far this year.
Okay, alright. Thanks Chief.
Yes ma'am.
Alright, next on the agenda, Amber Johns requesting the return of a cash bond in the amount of $300 to Frank Higginbottom for Samuel Higginbottom, case number MB24-0000805.
Uh, Shannon.
Shannon, this is just what, just a over paper? And I know we had some paperwork on that one as well. Alright. I don't know, I don't see. She would've said something by now. Alright, next on the agenda, Lieutenant Renee Cummins requesting approval to destroy eight computers from the police department in accordance with the FBI rules for destruction of digital media. And I guess this is just in your procedure?
Yes ma'am, yes.
Next on the agenda is Luanne Anderson Accounting Manager requesting a budget increase to appropriations Tele Network GL010-586-46595-0000 in the amount of $36,502.44. The city does not have a contract with VTEC, it is a month-to-month agreement with a three-year block on lower hourly costs, so. Yeah, especially with this month-to-month.
That would be a contract.
I know, that's not a contract, a month-to-month is, that means it can be negotiated if it's running month-to-month.
Right.
Yeah, that's what that means.
There was an agreement, we, Shannon and I have both looked for it in the meeting minutes and just busy with so many things, we didn't locate it, but there was an agreement that the council approved. And all it was, was so many hours per month at a certain rate, I think it's $145 an hour. And that was a contracted rate, not contracted, but agreed upon rate with VTEC.
Luanne, is this IT for phones?
It's IT, but they also work on phones.
So, the problem we have now with the phones not working, is this something they're trying to fix or can't fix, or somebody else needs to fix?
They're trying to fix it, yes.
We need them to come here and tell us what's going on and why these phones won't operate. I can't in good conscience approve this bill not knowing why I'm approved, is it? I think I sent an email about that also.
They are not the ones that should be dealing with the phones.
Well, who is?
They're just trying to make them work with our internet.
Who's the ones supposed to be dealing with the phones?
Crescendo should actually, they should have never been hired because.
I ain't worried about should have been hired, I just wonder who it is.
Those internet phones will not work the way they're supposed to, the way they found them. So, VTEC is trying to make them work through the network.
Okay. Well, I need, I need them, Cassie, because I think Cassie's over IT now, that kind of stuff. For the mayor, it's good, we need somebody here to tell us what's going on, why we can't get things on.
The confusion, man, is that are we trying to fix something that's not supposed to work? So we gotta keep spending a lot of money making something work that's not gonna work.
Thank you.
Or do we need to cut our losses and pressure the vendor that we bought the phone system from to either fix it or breach the contract?
The phone system is just one small part of what VTEC does. I mean, they're working on our security for our internet, all of our voicemail, I mean, our email. They're solving day-to-day problems that we have there, I mean, all kinds of things that I don't understand that, I don't.
But we do all agree, we got a phone issue.
Alright.
Well, yeah, but VTEC, that's a small part of this bill. This is not the main thing they're doing.
Let me add a question.
Go ahead Laura, and then I want, I want to ask, I need to ask you things.
Have you, were you able to contact the utility board to see if we could restore services for them again?
We cannot get the same service we have because they don't even have the same service. They have to be in contact with the person that provides their phone service, but we're locked into a five-year contract with Crescendo.
Well, that's, I know. Well, that's neither, I mean, that's neither here nor there. The issue is, we're locked into a contract that's not fulfilling, that's not working. So, there should be something in the contract to where we can breach the contract and get out of it, so have you guys?
The city attorney was supposed to have gotten the contract, did he?
I can't find a laid-out contract, it is a two-page thing, one page tells you how much it is, and the next page is just for signatures and says it's a 16-month contract.
Okay, well they should be able to give you a contract, or we shouldn't send them a check until they provide us with some documentation, so let's do that, so we don't need to pay them until they can produce us with a contract, and also that's what I was gonna ask, what Laura asked, what are you guys recommending? Since you guys are in charge and you're in the office, what is the, what is the plan? So what is the recommendation, because I mean, we have to, we have to have some phones and too.
You gotta have internet and everything else.
But I don't know if we should spend this $36,000 if we're just gonna be in the same situation next month.
Well, VTEC is mostly IT, and the IT-related phones, so.
It's two different things.
I know it, but if we still, in this contract with Crescendo, we're still gonna keep spending this money that.
But how much of the 36, the 36 is related to Crescendo, is that even part of it?
I have not broken that out, but just estimating, I'd say 30%.
Because we can't not pay the whole 36, being that we're dissatisfied with Crescendo.
I know, but it also should be broken down of what?
I agree, we don't need to pay the Crescendo 30%.
But Crescendo operates on top of VTEC, if the VTEC systems aren't working, the Crescendo system can't work.
36 is strictly VTEC.
So, that's, whatever we need is supposed to pay them, we should not, but others we have to make.
Problems Crescendo. Say the table, move from there.
Hold on, hold on.
We gotta pay our bills.
So, so this is, we've already inherited this bill, right? We owe this bill?
Yes, there, but if you have the breakdown, I sent you, breaks down to $36,000 to the Mayan voices, and then June invoices.
We can't figure this out, we're gonna have to start operating with some cell phones.
Oh, that's been suggested, in fact, a lot of us are using cell phones.
Yeah, Shannon, I don't, I don't think we should pay Crescendo, we don't need to pay them a separate, they can't, I mean, we don't have a problem with paying them, but until they can provide us with a contract, either fix the issue or let us out of the contract, then we don't send a check.
We need to see the contract.
That's only the 30%. We still have to pay the other.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to pay all of this, because the Crescendo system won't work if the VTEC system's not working under it.
That's right. So, the 36 will get us all the May and June invoices paid? We just received a July invoice for $6,100 something, so, I mean, that's not due yet, obviously, but it looks like July, August, and September will be about $6,000 or $7,000.
Well, we also need to be prepared too if we don't pay them, I mean, I don't know, we need a backup plan Shannon. We're gonna have to have a backup plan.
Do we have, is anybody keeping up with like a log of the phones that are, that aren't working, or? Okay, so we have an idea of what had, from the last year has not worked the entire time.
We can, we can do that, we can do like a survey, who's, who's this working, who's this?
Because I know some phones have not worked the entire year that we've paid for it.
So what, and what part of this is Cassie over, what part of this, the?
I believe all of it, the Crescendo and VTEC.
KSG and all.
Alright, so next time too, at the next meeting, we get an update on this, Mayor, can you have Cassie here so she can give us some insight?
She's under doctor's care right now.
So when is she coming back, I know she was out for a while.
She'll be here tomorrow.
She was in yesterday.
We need to get to VTEC, I need to figure out what Crescendo actually has in terms of legal hold.
And just send us an email out when you find out, Shannon.
And if Mayor, Mayor, if we have to have a special meeting or something, we've got to have Cassie here, the expert on the matter, to discuss with us the options of what we need to do and backup plan and et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, if this becomes a situation, because I think it's been three meetings now where she's not been here, we have it on the agenda of some sort of fashion, and whether it be UKG or whatever, we got to get this discussed and put in place, I'm tired of walking around the subject and just making exceptions. We need to have something in place, so whether it be a special meeting, called meeting when she's here, we know she's gonna be here, or putting this responsibility on somebody else, we need to figure that out. So if you can work on that and let us know what your plan is, that'd be appreciated.
I was under the impression after the conversation I had with Cassie yesterday that she wasn't over IT just to UKG, but that's not, that's not the understanding I'm in.
The email we all got.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just what, she was under the impression, because I asked her about this issue.
So Mayor, can you straighten that out and let us all know who's over what, and when we can meet and discuss this?
Cassie does a lot of this work at home, she's not able to be here, but yes, we're pushing this thing everywhere we possibly can. This is a five-year contract that the previous city clerk brought to you and approved and all, and it's got a lot of proof of tracks in, I don't know whether it's, but there's something, you know, we can't go back to the utility board, we won't check with them.
Well, until we, until we can find the contract, we don't know what we can do, so we need to find the contract.
Well, that's what the attorney, city attorney's doing now.
And also too Shannon, since you are in contact with the people that provide the service with the utility. And also too Shannon, since you are in contact with the people that provide the service with the utility board, see if you can find something else too, just so we can have some options.
The people that are providing the service for the utility board are the original ones that provided the phone service when I first came to work.
Okay. Well, see if, see if you can reach out to somebody else too, just so we can at least have a choice and decide which way you wanna go.
Will you get with us this week or next, Mayor?
Well, appreciate if y'all would sit back and let us do this and we'll bring it to you in a time zone.
Yeah, that's, it's been.
No, we're out, we're out of time there.
Probably two months now.
We're pushing faster than the body.
All right, all right, hold on everybody, so, Mayor, if you can put a rush on this, it would be greatly appreciated because I mean, we're getting the same calls that you get, I mean, I can't even call and get anybody to send a call.
We're not, because phones aren't working.
Well, I'm getting the calls from the citizens, they're calling me, that's what I'm saying, we're getting the same calls that he should be getting.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, so if you could just put a rush on this so we can
I hear you, thank you.
Make this a priority and take care of it.
I had three different citizens call today, one was trying to get ahold of the courts, one was trying to get ahold of the street department, another was trying to get ahold of the clerk's office.
Okay, all right, thanks, Luanne.
All right, you're welcome.
Next on the agenda is Josh Coleman to update the council on this in abatement properties, and I think, um, Luanne was a part of his?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, there's no one.
Problem with me, how you doing?
Good, how about you?
Doing good. Basically, uh, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Livingston a couple of times over the last several months and wanted to give you all an update, we're sort of in the, uh, the middle ground of the very lengthy process with, uh, nuisance and abatement. Uh, we recognized that there, uh, were a good handful of, uh, properties that, that I started focusing on and so just sort of like a little bit of a timeline, hit the ground running back in October, uh, after the budget was approved, so October first, uh, through October thirty-first, building department went through a process of inspecting all of the properties that I had listed on priority. And, uh, then from, uh, November seventh through March twenty-first, uh, Mr. Livingston handled all of the title searches, and from the, uh, March twenty-eighth until, uh, for tonight, July first, uh, he's finished up with the list pendants, which is a, a requirement to notify probate that the city is in the process of, uh, rectifying the issues on these properties. Um, so, uh, he's got, uh, some documents prepared that we needed to, uh, to work on with y'all to get approved of a public hearing. And the requirement is, uh, no less than fifty days after the list pendants is, uh, filed with probate that we can start working on our, uh, public hearings. So, based off of, uh, my math, I've got, if we get that approved, uh, tonight with, uh, July first, uh, public hearing is in the ballpark of, uh, September second. And then, uh, we have some things that we have to do in between that and from the public hearing. That would then turn into, uh, September sixteenth. We have a waiting period that takes us to October fourteenth, because we have to wait twenty days after the property is declared. So, uh, we're looking at the potential of, uh, if there's no, uh, issues, uh, demo being done in the ballpark of October twentieth. Just giving everyone sort of a timeline and things to expect.
How many properties are on this list?
Twelve.
Is eight straight, one of them?
It is.
Good.
Thirteen, sorry, uh, I had Mr. Livingston add that to the list.
Well, that's good. Josh, I've been getting lots of positive feedback, I think the community is really happy that you're here and like you always hit the ground running, so.
The unfortunate part is the, the patient side of, you know, how long it takes them to go through the, through the steps, but, uh, uh, when it comes down to Mr. Livingston's list, I want you to talk to him about the list pendants side of it.
The list pendants will be filed, we'll get everything signed tonight, approved tonight, I don't know if we can, it's not on the, uh, agenda.
Why wouldn't it add? She can't add it if she didn't have it addressed or anything to add.
Uh, I thought you said that it was included in our, this update, I asked you about it.
No, it, all I had was your updating on which one you were doing.
And I asked if Mr. Livingston had gave you that list of all of it? But you said.
I don't have the list.
You sent it to him?
No, I sent it to you. The list pendants.
Well, it's not gonna be October twentieth then.
We can do an add-on if we can.
We need to add it on there.
I've got, on office for everybody.
We can do an add-on.
Yeah, I was thinking. In addition to the list pendants, we've got to send out certified mail to every single owner, to every single person that had a mortgage on any of it, anybody that's borrowed a tax sale in the state of Alabama. It's not as simple as it sounds, Laura.
Well, it should be.
Those are the things that are occurring in between the public hearing.
Shannon, you can add it in between the council meeting, the fourth session of council meeting. Incorporating this by reference.
Yeah, we're gonna do these one by one too though, or can we do all of them in one action and not just read it all? I thought so, all right. Shannon, can one of the ladies do this or you'll have to go do it? Can one of the ladies, um, write this up or you'll have to go do it?
Well, there's gotta be added.
Did he give you one?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, so we're gonna have to go ahead and, um, get these added to tonight's agenda just so the timeline can stay the same. And then too, Josh, you said it was a long process, even though it's a long process, we're still better off than we were, um, a year ago and a couple of years ago, so we made some tremendous progress.
Thank you, ma'am, and, and since this bill crawls into the new budget year, just keep it in mind that, uh, that needs to be thought of through, you know, go through all the work and then making sure that we have the financial.
Where are we in our budget right now, like?
So, I've not spent much from that line item, most of it has been just certified letters and, and, uh, the legal work, so, um.
So, is there anything we can do with the money we already allocated, or just because of the timeline, it's just gonna roll into next time?
Depending on what y'all decide to do with, you know, that line item itself. But since we're talking about, just throwing that out there for consideration.
All right, just make sure, just make sure too, at budget time, um, Josh, you remind us that these things are rolled over from last budget, so that when we consider your budget for next time, it's not, it's not gonna have a conflict. All right.
Thank you, Josh.
All right, uh, you done, Luanne?
Yes.
Thank you, Luanne.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is Heather Long to update the council on election matters. Heather, you're up. You doing all right tonight?
Hi, I'm all right, y'all.
Good.
Good. Okay, so as y'all know, um, qualifying stopped on June twenty-fourth. Um, we had twenty candidates, everything got sent in, um, sent in to the ethics commission. Um, everybody was cleared, filed, verified, uh, we sent that in on the twenty-seventh. They should have a sample ballot to us shortly, that has to be posted by July twenty-fifth, but they said they're always on time, shouldn't be an issue. Um, I contacted Ken Brewer, um, asked him to, um, be in the role of chief inspector. Uh, he has gotten together a poll worker list for you guys, I put it in your packet so that you could look that over. Um, he also sent over pay vouchers of what, um, pay rates they made for the general election of twenty twenty-four. I looked back in the, um, resolutions for our election in twenty twenty. So, I also made you a sheet showing you pay rates for that election versus the general election, so that you could decide what kind of pay rate you wanna do, uh, for the poll workers. We, um, put a resolution together, but you will have to decide on what pay rate you want to go with to pay the workers. Um, you have until August the eleventh to appoint election officials, and then, um, we have to publish the list of those officials in the voting locations by August the fifteenth. So, we have time, but we do have it ready for you if you wanna go ahead and consider that, and we have a resolution ready as well.
I think, yeah, we do, but the only thing is there's no dollar amount on it, that's the thing.
Right, we wanted to see what you, what pay rate you were gonna go with, and I can fix that.
I think just go to twenty twenty-four.
Yeah. So, um, can you come up with a dollar amount, Heather, if we just go with the twenty twenty-four one?
Do what?
Can you just come up with a, can you go and add it up, um, multiply by how many poll workers we have and come up with a dollar amount, so we can go ahead and approve that tonight with the dollar amount?
Do you know what, um?
Well, that's what she's asking is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you.
The twenty twenty-four rate, that's what I said.
Do you wanna go with the twenty twenty-four rate?
Yeah. Apparently I'm passing that.
Yeah, I can go fix the resolution and put that in, no problem.
All right.
Thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Also, I wanted to let you know that, uh, we did reach out to the league. Um, there is no compensation just for election manager, because they consider that as part of the, um, duty and responsibility of the, uh, city clerk. Uh, the only compensation there is for is the absentee election manager, which is fifty dollars a day. That doesn't start until after we receive our, um, absentee ballots, uh, which they should send at the same time that they send our ballots, so.
I don't know how to pay it, we will come up with something.
Yeah.
So.
We'll come up with something, thank you for checking on that though, and making sure it's legit.
Thank you. All right. I know it, but she also thought she was gonna be compensated for it, too.
Yeah.
So, number, I think I need a dollar amount on number six.
I think she will bring it.
And then Shannon's gonna add, how many things is that, thirteen? All right, next on the agenda, Steve Mash to update the council on the pickleball basketball project and to request approval of bid for staying. Hey, Steve, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, I'm excited, we're finally.
Finally progressed, right?
I know the ball's being kicked down the hill.
Finally progressed, so, we have, y'all should have the certified bid sheet, we have bids Thursday, a lot of y'all are here. Um, unfortunately, like everything we do, it costs more than we assumed it would. Fortunately, the architects did break the regular base bid down into six pickleball courts with a full-size basketball court, and we currently have the money right now to do that project. Um, our recommendation and request from y'all is tomorrow, three hundred thousand of that eight hundred thousand that, um, Mr. Lewis just said we've already made off the bond proceed interest, because that would get us our eight courts that we wanted. Um, it's gonna get our site furnishing, our landscapes, and it would allow us to resurface the current tennis courts. If you haven't been out there, I sent y'all pictures today, cracks everywhere. So, while those specialized, you know, workers are in Sulacaga, I think we would save a lot of money for them to go ahead and go down the street and finish that project.
And that was the whole one of doing the investments too, to help cover additional costs that we wouldn't have been able to come up with.
The interest will help they far, it would help us, this project, if you, I'll send y'all the drawings again with the landscaping and everything, it's gonna make that corner just absolutely gorgeous up there.
Well, it's not taking money away from anything else, it's extra money.
No, sir, it's, it's, it's already designated.
We don't have any extra money actually.
And this is just the interest off that money.
Money from the investment, it's extra money that's not taken away from the project.
No, it's not extra, this, this what we playing for, that's what we wanted to do, the investment, we playing for these things.
It's eight hundred and fifty extra that was not there to begin with.
To cover extra costs.
Steve, what we actually did, so did y'all decide what this is gonna be called?
That, that's still kinda up in the air, and fortunately, we got about six to seven months to think about this. There's been some really funny names going out there, Brian's gonna be laughing back there in a minute. Um, and, and maybe it's a competition, like we've done things in the past where the city puts in their information and we pick a winner out of that, because.
They'll do like a little social media and.
You know, basketball and pickleball, you really can't think of anything cool to mix that with, so.
Cause we don't wanna call it basket pickle, do we?
No, and silly pickle, man, I heard, and, you know, they wanna call it the hub, but to me, the new rec center should be the hub.
Really?
Everything's gonna happen at the new rec center.
I'm excited.
So, I think it's, I think we need to do that, just put it out there as a competition for the public, that's how Sulawar got named and some of our other things, and get the community involved in the project. Plus, us get the word out, it's gonna let them know, hey, we're starting a new project, you know?
So, we're okay with this?
I am.
Yeah, I'm good.
So, it's not currently for y'all to be voted on for the extra money, so that may be an add-on that y'all wanna add as well.
Tonight?
Yes.
You may wanna tell Shannon.
You might wanna run down the hall.
I'll run her down, because we are supposed to let the company know who won the bid tomorrow.
We need to get it done so you can do it right.
Yep.
I got, I gotta, um, oh, no, we got.
Yeah, before you, before you, I have a question for you. Uh, the sub-island parking status?
We've got our door in, um, we're currently waiting on bids, once we have access to that area. I will tell you, the guy said the toll it was at least from nineteen sixty-nine. There's actually separate areas for the commode, so some of the walls are knocked in, the graffiti is alarming, or I would bring you pictures, but we're currently getting bids to get that finished, um, or get y'all a bid on what it would cost.
Timeline issue?
Really depends on the, um, contractor, but hopefully by the end of next month, the second meeting of next month, I should bring y'all some numbers.
Okay, and also too, Steve, I know you and I talked, and this is something we had talked about briefly, um, putting a walking track at that East Highland property.
Yeah, we discussed that, and, and, you know, our buddy Reed, who I could always call him, would jump and do anything I asked him to, and I know.
Looking wrong for that.
He's already shaking his head.
We have the tools in-house in Sulacaga, they just happen to be in different apartments to complete that project. Um, if they could cut it in, we could top dress it with crush and run, put signs out there, I mean, you're talking about a very small project that would, wouldn't take a lot of time for a month.
And no, no code planning issues, just something you could just do?
Mr. Redstone's not in here, fortunately, we'll make sure that everything's eighty-eight grades.
Well, we may, we better get everything we wanna prove while he's not here then.
Yeah. And like I said, that, that would be a very low-cost project, if y'all wanna, you know, call me anytime, we'll meet out there and kinda lay it out, and we can measure.
That's low cost, we should find a way to add it to the.
Yeah, we, we, we could get to a pretty solid estimate on, cause all your buying is crush and run, you've already got the label, so it should be fair to you.
Cool.
Thanks, Cromer, we appreciate you so much.
I know, I can't wait to put your number in my phone.
Don't do it.
I already got a list of stuff I need you to, um, beat me with and, um, take care of.
You know, Reed's fooled us.
So, next on the, um, list is, um, Chaplain Mark Ledbetter to discuss organizing an emergency response team. Um, I know I talked to Chaplain Ledbetter about this a couple of times previous to this meeting, he did give us this small pamphlet that I need to magnify, the last to read. But he's gonna give us some information on, um, maybe an option on how we can better serve the citizens in a tragedy moving forward. Do you need the chair, um, Chaplain Ledbetter?
Ryan, once I get here, I appreciate your indulgence and the words of BBT, a built for comfort, not to speak.
I won't, I won't steal that.
All right, so Chaplain Ledbetter, I know you and I talked, um, last week, um, and we all are aware of the fire that happened at the, um, Autumn Prince Apartments, and it was really, really, um, hard in our community, and you brought to, um, my attention that there's something that the city could put in place to basically help organize things like that, so that people know what type of donations, you know,
Yes, ma'am.
to bring in, and that way, cause I mean, there was a really, really good outpour of support from the community, but there were a lot of things that people ended up with that we can't even do anything with, because.
Yes, ma'am, um, first, I appreciate the outpouring generosity and the faith in Sulacaga, responding to the needs financially and other resources, I appreciate, uh, the individuals who initiated those calls for assistance, and I appreciate the other businesses and agencies that helped facilitate and feed some of those individuals who were impacted by the fire. Uh, this is something like this has drilled my heart for some time, as you recall, two thousand eighteen, I stood before the council with, with a thought. Uh, the one thing that this incident did bring to bear, as you had mentioned, is we had, and I'm not fault in throwing stones at anyone, we had several independent agencies. And there was redundancy, overlap, and there were donations that frankly were not acceptable under the circumstances. There's having to store these excess donations. So, what my point is, there should be in place a centralized, organized agency So what my point is, there should be in place a centralized, organized agency which will help facilitate these needs, organize and create a clearinghouse for the finances and for the distribution. Again, the outpour was good. I met with those who were impacted by the fire and and I'm not minimizing the impact that this had. But I ask you, had it been a tornado, how would we have responded? You have a timeline there. Back when the Cold War was hot, Mayor Dark and that administration organized a civil defense unit. But it never came to fruition as far as I can tell historically, but that was codified under chapter nine and civil defense disaster emergency preparedness. So there's a document in your code that calls for the creation of this type of unit to respond to these emergencies. Now the details, the language is archaic because it goes back to the civil, uh, the Cold War. But it's still in place. It's there. And then later, uh, when, uh, Mayor James Payton was in office, I'm assuming executive boarder, he formed a Sulacaga Emergency Response Agency and appointed five or six individuals to serve on that board. I don't know what happened. I've tried to reach out to some people who are still living who were on that to see what happened, how did it unfold? So basically, we haven't had anything other than, um, when, uh, Sam Wright was in office, he tried to formulate having investigation, calling resources, but unfortunately, things did not pan out for that. So when Mayor Murphy was in office, I and, uh, the mayor and the leash chief and the fire chief and, uh, our city, uh, city roads and streets, we formed an ad hoc committee because we anticipated a fight, I mean, a tornado. So we were just getting everything ready, but it was ad hoc and we didn't have any way to really mobilize the community. The position is by FEMA, A E M A and E F E you made in Talladega County, is volunteers are the first in and the first and the last to leave. But the volunteers need to be organized, they need to be trained, they need to be able to respond when called upon. This can help facilitate. I'm not, I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but this has been my heart for several years. I went trained critical incident response chaplain and certified by a CIRC Community Emergency Response Team. So this has been ongoing for years. I've responded to Moore, Oklahoma, I've been to Kentucky, I've been to other places. I've seen it in action. And while we're waiting on FEMA, they have to be activated by a national emergency. When they had the floods back, uh, what? In twenty-two, I had, uh, formed a group called Caribbean Response Network. I reached out to A E M A, asked him for assistance for those impacted by the floods and they said there has to be a declared emergency, emergency before they are activated. So, uh, we've had several incidents in which, uh, the flooding in twenty-two, more recently, and you've had council meetings and you've discussed this, you referred, I can refer to, um, what was it? Mitigation plan. To compare the mitigation plan, and if you can wade through two thousand two hundred fifty-six pages, you're doing well, even with search engine. Try to see how you can accommodate what the state emergency plan is all about.
Who would, where would this training come from, Chaplain Ledbetter? So who would, who would train these people? Is there some sort of training like you can register for or like?
You can online and train, and I've been certified to train.
Okay. FEMA offers classes online, don't they, to?
Yes, I, I received certification online from the, uh, from FEMA. I have attended classes by the A E M A on donation management. There is, uh, foster distribution, which is for distribution of the donations. There's there's so much that can be done that is in place. It can help those individuals who were impacted by the fire by coordinated effort of individuals working with agencies in, uh, in the community. One agency that I was able to work with was SAFE because they have in-place programs that may be able to assist. The immediate need has been finding alternate housing for some of our individuals. I think three or four have already found substitute housing. But see, uh, by having the agencies in place and having somebody in or a, a, a board that is skilled and understand and can you be used, if you get the phone call, you call out, everybody knows what they're supposed to do. I draw the analogy, if you see an at-bend, you get it disturbed, it looks like chaos. That's the way it looks like in Moore, Oklahoma, but every ant knows where it is going and what it's going to do. That's maybe a poor analogy, but when we have volunteers who've been trained that when something comes up, it's just a matter of communicating the call for the need. And so what I am suggesting, recommending, or asking, because I, I'd like to know what happened to chapter nine. I'd like to know what happened to, uh, Mayor Payton's executive order. Uh, if it's all the books, it seems like to me, if it's all the books, there's some type of legal obligation to get things done. If it's not, then it, if it, if it's not adequate, it's not accurate, then it needs to be amended to bring it up to date or it needs to be repealed.
And you're also volunteering to help with this too, right Chaplain Ledbetter?
I, I will devote my time as much as I can, as long as it does not interfere with my role as a pastor.
So, um.
Fair enough.
And this is something I do think, um, just my opinion, I do think we need, we're going to have to have a separate meeting, um, with you so that we can see, because I know I asked you about the bylaws and you said we may have to come up with some and just decide how we want this to operate. And also too, we're going to also have to, I don't know this, the mayor may know it, how do we get a state of emergency declared? You know, like, how do we, you know, so those are some other things that we're going to have to, um, know too, in order to get something declaring emergency in our area so that FEMA can come in while.
I don't know if I can tell you the county, but I know the governor has to declare one for A E M A and President for FEMA to step in.
But there should be something that we can do as a, you know, kind of local government administration to reach out to these people to tell them, you know, that's what we need.
Volunteers, it was going on in Carolina, where volunteers are rebuilding houses. It's not the federal government who's rebuilding these houses. It's coming from donations of, of businesses and it's people volunteering their time and their effort to get people adequate housing. Uh, there's no way you can describe the devastation that took place in Carolina. But I've been, like I said, in Moore, Oklahoma, and, and again, I'm not insulting. But had this been, if Ivan in two thousand and four had hit us or if Tropical Storm Zeta had impacted us, then our plan right now is help! Help!
So what I think, um, I don't know if the rest of the council agrees, I think we need to, I would like for us to at least add an additional hour to one of the, maybe the next work session so that we can discuss this and decide how we want to get this board appointed. Because we can't do anything until we get a board appointed and then the board is going to have to come up with all the rules and you're going to have to.
I'm in agreement and, uh, I will provide the information that's needed based upon what? FEMA, Homeland Security, uh, who's the National Fire Association? Who's that? In how?
Mark, are any, any other municipalities nearby that are doing this that we can garner information from?
I'm sorry?
Any other communities near us or our sizes that we can garner information from about how they made it down there?
Frankly, I do not know, so I'm not be, I've been more concerned with Sulacaga and surrounding communities that I don't know of other agencies, uh, community agencies that do. I know that one time, another organization, I had a memorandum, what's the word? Memorandum of understanding to the local communities then, but I was not able to keep that up because of personal circumstances.
All right. So let's add an extra, we're going to put you on the next work session. So you're going to bring all the information you have for us, um, we'll get with Shannon and we'll just spend an hour on deciding how we're going to get this board appointed.
I'll give it to Ms. Plexico and then she can, uh, decide later as appropriate.
Okay, and we may have to pull some stuff too, because I know even with that missing abatement board, it went unactive for a long time. So that's one of the things that this council has, um, reactivated as well and is doing really, really well, so.
Right, but my, my purpose is not to put any undue pressure upon this council. You have enough things to attend to. Uh, I appreciate your time and your efforts that you make towards, uh, stewardship of our resources here in this community. So, uh, I just would like to see something going on and like, uh, council, apparently there may be other communities that have a working agency already. I never saw the need for it because they had all the resources.
All right. So what I'll do, I'm going to make sure I have my list of questions and, um, probably suggest that everybody else is the same. So at the next, um, meeting, we'll probably start at four o'clock so we can have a meeting just for this and decide how we want to get that board appointed and get Shannon to do some research on this chap, chapter nine civil defense and see what she can come up with. Because I mean, the will may already be invented and we don't have to do anything but just reactivate it and put it in place.
I agree. Right. And it could serve like the industrial board, airport, or tree preservation. It could be an agency under the city's, uh, unknown.
Thank you, Chaplain. We appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you, Mark.
Y'all have a good evening. You too.
All right, next on the agenda is Calvin Miller, T C E D A, to discuss amended application for abatement of taxes for Programmable Logic Consulting LLC. Hey Calvin, how are you tonight?
I'm doing well, thank you. Good evening. Uh, in April of two thousand and four, Programmable Logic Consulting came and asked for the abatement, granted, sales.
I can barely hear you, Mr. Calvin. I'm sorry.
Can you speak into the mic, please, sir?
It's kind of working.
It's not.
In April of two thousand and twenty-four, uh, Programmable Logic Consulting, uh, came to the city council and asked for it and granted an abatement on the sales and use taxes, the building materials, equipment that would go into the project located in the old Hoover's building. Prior to that, it was the W. S. sausage and part of that was Silvass Foods. And, um, one of the things, if they exceed the, um, capital investments by more than ten percent, they would have to get an amended abatement. Their original capital investment is going to be one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand and they expect it to end up at two million, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And so they would require.
Those are, anything else that we need to do?
No, there's nothing else. It's, it's just, uh, if you afford it, uh, business, I'll go over it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Calvin.
Thank you, Mr. Calvin.
I have a couple things to add.
All right, and thanks for this resolution too, um, Heather.
Hey Calvin, is there any idea of how many jobs this is going to bring?
Yes, uh, can you play the, the?
Okay.
Couple of quick things. We've been operating under a consulting arrangement with Melody Salter dealing with, uh, cleaning up some things in the city clerk's office. That agreement expired at the end of June. She's been out for the last week dealing with some, some family emergency issues, so the last week of work hasn't gotten done. Uh, she's not in this week. This is also a holiday week. I'd like to suggest that we add two weeks, ten days to allow her to finish and be able to wrap everything up for us so that we can have a nice pull around the package of things she's been working on, assuming she's willing to do it.
I think that's fair.
So we need to get Shannon to add that to, we'll do that when she comes in.
You got, you got cell phone, you take Shannon?
Great, thank you. So it's added to ten days?
Add ten days?
Yeah. And just confirming again, Mayor Heidel, the city council, uh, directed rescission of two raises in the city council meeting on May twenty-second. I believe you said you weren't going to do that. I just need to reconfirm that you have not followed the city council's instructions.
Well, as I stated in my, um, prepared letter to you about what we're following up on, by not putting evidence of that as you already approved the pay. And that's what I based it on. Pay plan, educational plan, and by consensus, always been standard, but SOP, that's what I based it on.
But the, the, uh, the award, the award of one of those was not, uh, not lining with the pay plan. It was a violation of the pay plan. So, thank you very much. Done.
And the other one wasn't asked. I mean, we, it doesn't matter if we feel people should get these raises or not, it still has to come before the council. We can't just, we can't just authorize and give out raises without council's approval. All right, does anybody else have, um, anything to add to the work session?
Where do we stand with the, uh, website stuff? Because I know, uh, Cassie gave us some different quotes and we never officially voted on it.
Now, Cassie, I'll be there.
Cassie, maybe.
I didn't know if we were planning to address it again at the next meeting, maybe?
Uh, we should probably say that there's no urgency. Again, it has to be, uh, ADA compliant by two thousand and twenty-seven. There's plenty of time and we've got other smaller things to worry about right now.
All right, so anybody got anything else?
There's nothing else on the list.
All right, so hold up.
It, it is taking a little longer for them to update the agenda, so we're going to have to, you know, pause for a few minutes after the work session.
All right, so, um, up under old business is, um, actually that is necessary to approve the budget increase for the, um, tele network, um, for the IT services. Then up under new business, um, there's a budget amendment for the fire department that's going to be considered tonight. Um, the reimbursement of the three hundred dollar cash fund, destruction of the eight computers from the police department. Uh, we're going to award the bid for the pickleball court. And Steve, she's adding the thing for the money. Okay, all right. Um, after that is necessary to approve the, um, tax abatement to the Programmable Logic Consulting. What else we got? Uh, we're going to approve the election, um, officials and the pay, and we got that reservation. Um, accounts payables.
Stop right there, Ms. Nix, please. Counsel, I recommend that we remove Alexandra Hyde from the council payable. I think we gave a recommendation to close all POs and until Ms. Hyde has every bill that she has for the city of Sulacaga, we need to, uh, either hold payment or put it as a separate line item because tonight, I will not be voting on a council payable unless Alexandra Hyde is removed at the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred dollars from the E and L office.
Yeah, but it was supposed to be separate, you know, um.
Well, it needs.
Yeah, it never was supposed to be rolled into here because they've been having to extra budget increase, um, to pay these.
So they don't have to put it on their line anyway.
They don't, and that's what seems to be the issue is, we're just trying to make everything all inclusive and paying it from wherever we want to pay it at.
So somebody might want to tell the lead and tell Shannon to do that too.
Well, we just take the dollar amount out. We just take the dollar amount, put that out and prove everything else. So we just need to tell, we want to get a B and P. Alright, and next, um, action that is necessary to approve, June twenty twenty-five payroll at the amount of, that's five hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, ninety-six cents. And we'll have to go back over that again when Shannon comes in to just, um-
And we do need to know for the record that we're approving payroll because we've been given payroll, but payroll includes items we have not approved and rejected too.
And also payroll is never itemized either, so that's, that's never been the thing. Payroll, payroll is not itemized. So in order to make sure the people who are supposed to get paid, get paid, we do have to approve the payroll. But we still did not authorize those unauthorized raises that were not presented and approved by the council.
Correct.
Alright, so we're gonna, um, pause our work session while we wait for Shannon to get those, um, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen add items on to, um, to be considered and on tonight's agenda. So council, mayor, do y'all have anything else for the work session?
I don't.
But I mean, you know what's on here. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and, um, pause the work session at six twelve and we'll reconvene when Shannon comes back with those documents.